Walk right down the line.
Yeah, we walk back down the same one. Cause I thought of you when I saw the red. There. There. Oh.
All right. Um, ready to move into the table? If on you.
Hi, Harry.
Good. How are you?
We tell them. I think that's it. And this is what they say. Yeah. Hey, man. Are you all right? Okay.
I was the same way when I got through the stairs, all by myself.
Huh?
I was breathing out hard and I couldn't see anything.
What is what? I'm hanging but. This is my. I read for that.
Uh.
I read for that.
Although.
It is on. It is that long back. But I don't know what I want to do. The best for me. Come on down. Oh, is that good? No, that's a hot spot. You know, we need that. For the use of computers.
We need to put a speaker.
Now, that's a hot spot. You know what I will? We might not be able to do anything. Cause I couldn't get on the uh.
Hello.
I could get on the side.
Hello.
You know, I came down here trying to do something I want to get on there, do a. A webinar, I couldn't even do it. Yeah. Which one? Seeing them down in the basement.
The council. The council. Certainly, we want to get in the office. About one to two days. Hopefully. Three years. Or we'll decide.
No, we just want to. I think. Is that okay?
He wrote. See, I have. I forget.
I don't. Thank you.
Is that what I mean? That's what I asked.
Well, do I? And I, cause I want me to. I'm gonna do a webinar. Look up. Up seal. Then more than I probably get on there. Cause I wanna be like driving out to my cell. Race, we need to do the rain out with you. They gotta be able to do this on video. They, since the wifi. You know, that's the truth. That's why I can't. Hey. I said, you know, you're moving.
You have a lot of time.
We gotta talk about over here. Do that. We have space. It'll be definitely.
Is it gonna be a lot of people home?
I don't know. Probably. Supposed to be done.
I'm talking about on your time.
We don't have that.
Well, you know.
They got more ready.
Not ready yet.
My, my way. My. I'm gonna have to be a part of. I don't want to be a kid. You can ask her right there. Just I would mention, just there on my team. I can't do them enough. Cause we have to try.
That's the one. Two months.
They got a little black box right there. I mean, it's coming up. It's gonna make it a little. Uh, I got. I should.
You see, it's John.
I did not. I think he's. I don't see it. Yeah, but them girls, them, their boy and girl. I will not.
What you doing?
Yes. Their boy and girl.
Ladies and gentlemen. You know, that has been. Please.
I can't do it.
Please, what I access for you though? I don't want him to. I remember. And it's all.
You guys. But I.
I don't know. I'm. I can do this in here.
I can do that. Right there.
Same idea.
I can't. The last couple. Okay. Oh, you want me to do that? At least we just said. Oh, yes.
You said. All of them. Those get. Move.
Yeah, and that's what she's saying. And.
That's my, my son.
Awesome, Harvey. James Perkins, how you doing?
Hey, Mayor.
I just want to let you know I'll be attending virtual this evening, but I am present.
Yeah, you're dying here.
Yeah. Is Scott there yet?
Yes. You see her?
Okay. Are you, uh, how you doing? Man Scott, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna have to attend virtual on this one, okay?
Yes, sir.
But I am, but I am present. Respond to any of these questions on behalf.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you. No, I'm gonna take. One of those. We've got a lot of them. And you come. I'm gonna play that. Now, I've been on. I don't see. Look safe. Oh. But I'm.
Oh, I don't know. This. We need to.
Well, I had already. I had already put work on him. In our. Power. Okay. Yeah, I'm a.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. I already. That was another crazy.
I'm.
Obviously, why?
Sure.
I don't know. Looking. I got you. Okay, just see now. I'm gonna hear. You know, I was just trying to.
Moving down here. I don't think. I know Billy's not coming. Clay's not coming. Chris is not coming. I don't think Sam's coming.
What do you want me to? I mean, a quick background?
Yes.
Okay. So the model.
It's no more work.
Okay. All right. So I'll connect the.
Yeah, baby. You just come. Come in tomorrow.
So I bet I can be a. Wouldn't it be a meeting for this? But I don't.
You're.
I mean.
It may just be me and you, Jane.
Oh, and I can be you? Okay. I didn't know that. I thought more of the council people who need to know this. I'm here.
Well, me and you know what, tell them what to do.
Oh, yeah, we're telling. We definitely.
Okay. Okay.
What you have back here?
Sarah look like he's running, but we're going there. It look like he's running, but we.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's me. Perfect. There. They gave me. You know, thing. Right, okay, perfect. So we went through everything. Something. Quite. Okay. 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 I tell you more. You don't mind. I mean. I will. Best. Okay. It is. Okay. All right. Any, so. It's supposed to be. Uh, it's all. I'm just gonna. Like. Some things wanna happen. Okay. You know something? I got all my. Why you? Right, okay. Available. Okay. Perfect. Perfect, perfect. So we just. High points, I gotta blow with your buddy. They kinda like about three of your things. Okay. Before. Okay. I have the new star. Indiana. Tell them thanks to these fans. Or it's only needed. Perfect, okay? I'm gonna. I'm gonna go back over. I'm gonna call it. I don't want me to just make you do some. All right. We'll. I'll call this the order. Yes. I'll pray for us and we'll get started.
Okay.
You know, we thank you, uh, once again for the privilege to serve. To, uh, to serve each other, to serve our communities. We thank you, uh, for. Privilege. Because I said you would, uh, give us direction and discernment as we try to be diligent and a good stewards of what you bless us with. Just give us clarity as we work through things, dear Lord. And, uh, just pray that the things that we do and say will be pleasing to your side. Correct me.
Amen.
If you were standing next to a side to play. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the. Which says, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. All right, this is a, this is a single agenda meeting. To not. Send some. Information. This Allison sent some information to council members. Uh, and I'll just say publicly. Um, we have several, several things. Uh, that we need to work on from a financial. Uh, point with the city, one of which are, are numerous budget items. We, we knew that we were gonna be receiving American Rescue Funds. And, uh, so we really, uh. In a, the, the budget and the things that we're mulling through. Uh, are loaded with expenses that we were hoping to be able to cover. Uh, with American Rescue Fund. Some of those things we did not immediately put into the budget. It was approved. They're hanging out there. We've got to figure out what will qualify for American Rescue Funds and what won't. So we make sure we keep ourselves out of trouble. Um, we got to establish some policies and procedures. Uh, before we do anything else. And that is the single purpose of this meeting. Is to get those established. So we'll know how to. If we don't have the sidelines, we don't know when to get out of bounds. It's kinda hard to play football game and basketball game. You don't know where the edge of court is. Um, so that's kind of what we're trying to do is make sure we define. Uh, the rules and, and the boundaries. So we'll, we'll know how to, know how to run up and down the floor. Um. I asked, uh, Mr. Scott to, uh, to come this evening and he has graciously done so. And really, uh, we're gonna rely heavily on him to, um. Kinda hold our hand through this process and, uh, help us navigate these, these waters. Um. We, you want me to kinda turn, turn it over to you? Have, what you, kinda what do you wanna do?
Uh, you can turn it over to me and I'll.
Okay.
There.
Okay.
Perfect. Perfect. Um, couple things that we wanted to actually do first to just say, uh, just thank you to the City Council. Uh, Council President, Council to the Mayor. Uh, just what opportunity I have a chance to work along with, uh, with the city. Along with your American Rescue Plan. Uh, a couple of things that we actually did was to go through and look at. Uh, some information that the mayor provided us. Uh, and this, you know, uh, and from department as well as understanding what things are your needs. And so. Uh, if you'll see. Thank you a lot. I'm playing. Yeah. But it's what it's. We actually went through and actually looked at some of the things that were ideas that was actually in the budget. Uh, before, I think, was taken out. They would look at as far as they possibly expenses for American Rescue Plan. Uh, I'm not gonna go real deep, yeah, detailed through this. I'm gonna send this, uh, to the councilman so he can be able to actually look through and look at more details. But we went through and just did a rough assessment overall to look at. As finishers, that y'all, they were proposing, a lot of them, different operational calls. And we see where some of those things could qualify, but there are additional detailing information necessary so that we can understand exactly what's gonna be the purpose. Like say, if there's money that may say something dealing with building, uh, building, upgrade, or building work, or building operations. Wanna know what it mean that that's gonna be upgraded bathroom, upgraded lighting. So we just needed additional details. And if you'll see that actually in the spreadsheet. Um, and also the mayor has been emailing it so that he has. Also. Uh, it just has on there where it talks about things that qualify, things that are not qualified. And then with the color code, anything that deals with red, red is what we wanna stay away from. Uh, those are things that, uh, that can be. That can possibly be dangerous and it don't, don't qualify. But once we get additional information and detail that clearly outlines and check the goals, we can look at what involves to be green and yellow. Green is the best, yellow is on the line. And that's what we spend time looking at what is necessary so that it leans more closer towards qualifying. Or if it does not, it leans more towards red and you wanna stay away from it. Uh, also, as you're seeing here, it talks about, um, vehicles. Now, one thing that the American Rescue Plan does is not direct purchase of vehicles. Uh, that's something that you can't purchase directly out of the American Rescue Plan. But there are some options that things we're looking at that will be real support for other operational calls and other things across the board. Have not directly to be funded through the American Rescue Plan. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So I, I think. And I guess. Um. It would be prudent to maybe go through our budget and try to identify some things maybe that we have in the approved, in the budget.
Uh huh.
That we could tag as, uh, rescue, that we could use rescue funds for. If he does any of that at this point, or is this something that we, we need to do?
Uh, definitely, you said, as well as your overall general budget. Uh, I've had a sense to see the total general budget that y'all have. But, uh, we went through different items that relates to. Cause like this right here, this would be information dealing with, uh, that was maybe a thing that was proposed to me, could be covered by the American Rescue.
Right, right, right.
Um, but would be wanting to look at your total budget and then see what things would qualify, what things don't qualify.
Because in, in the reason I'm saying that, because the, the, uh, increased salaries in the police department. Um. I'm guessing based on what I've read, that those increases in pay will be something that could qualify for American Rescue Funds.
Um. That y'all do a, um, increase across the board.
Yes.
And now there are some limits when it comes as it relates to salaries. Um, some things, well, one can work it like wages under thirteen dollars. Some things that are lower, of course, but, uh, may qualify. But we do want. But those salaries. But, but what. But, but what we want to do is that we've actually looked at some other solutions that are cleaner, easier, or direct, that would allow you to do things for it or, um. General fund, but we don't have to look at so many like a small but area.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. I had been reading up on, and I see, uh, under the U S Department of Treasury, they say that with public safety, public health, and you. Managed service that, um, we have police departments, our department, that, uh, some of the funding would be used, you can use it in as a payroll. In the payroll. So that's, uh, that was one of our main things that, uh, some of the things that we were looking at. And, um, saying that, um, what we did do. We had put it in our, uh. In our administration, uh, prior.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, we just approved, yeah, we just put it in the, in the general budget, and that's the reason I was asking that question again. Was, you know, could we tag those salary increases, which was a pretty hefty amount? Could we tag that to American Rescue Funds and free us up to kind of spend the money on?
And that's what I was asking him, you know, I, I had been, I had get training and I proved the whole effort down. And I saw that, that we could, and that's why I was saying some of the things that we had already been asking for, and I just didn't want to.
Well, well, the thing that we actually looking at is that, and, and if we run through this list that's in here. And, uh, and these are different things that I had a chance to talk to, uh, uh, the mayor about as related to the list, so we can be ready for this mean to address, uh, some of the concerns. And kind of give you some general overview of some areas that are easily, that easily qualify. Then, cause it's like, like I say, our goal is, is green, some, some things are counted on a yellow line, but. If you actually look at number one, and when we get to number five, I explained that, uh, that's gonna be a good one, definitely, but. If you look at number one, uh, looking at pandemic supplies and equipment, things dealing with your PPE supplies and sanitizer, uh, uh. Things you may want to have, uh, uh, you, I mean, uh, not to get later, but like, uh, cleaning the air. You know, when you can actually have, when you put them in the building, clean the air out, uh, and other PPE supplies. Uh, next thing was partnerships along with, uh, the hospital, uh, health fairs, health events in the community, but recent education. Um, a third thing would be heating and cooling, um, dealing with bathrooms, dealing with upgrades to your restroom, dealing with your separate air system for your ventilation. Uh, if you got buildings that maybe have old. Several air units, uh, like the air is not flowing good, or you don't have the air within your building. That can be something that actually qualifies on that. Um, number five, I'm gonna skip to five, first upon responder salaries. What the goal is that we actually have gotten from this mail, the payroll salary that y'all already paid. From March third to September thirtieth. The American Rescue Plan can help with recouping some of those on back to your general fund. And I know you're looking at salaries that you're looking for, but what we're looking at is what you already spent. Those things to be qualified to get reimbursed some from that American Rescue Plan, uh, that come back to your general fund, the double cost that you had.
Okay. So, and I think we need to do a pretty thorough investigation of those things.
Um, yes, sir.
And let me, let me ask you this, because two, I, I want to make sure we have a very good understanding of. From, I guess from start, you know, from the get-go, our policies and procedures for approving expenditures. For Americans. I have. I have extensive experience dating with USDA and the FCC and. With, um. Funds, I've been through a couple of USDA audits. Um, and I know the way we do things. Not in a municipal setting. But with a public utility. Um, so there's some similarities there. I, I guess. Do we want to? It was mentioned that. Uh, every time we approve. To spend money, or that, that maybe we need, I think maybe it came out of the league that. If we're spending money, we need to do a, a, a resolution every time we approve. An expenditure that qualifies for American Rescue Funds, is that, is that what you?
Yeah, they were saying, telling us that the league, you know, when we just, uh. Just like we got, when we get ready to use this, this, this fund. And to prove it, to get it approved by the whole body and document from our attorney that, uh, you do it like in a, a, a resolution or, or. Or something saying to get the vote on here is where we are spending this amount of money on, uh, toward, yeah.
Okay. Cause what, what we have as well is a policy that we recommend to, um, all agencies that we work with is that. Uh, that is a full head policy, what I said, if there's something, what you actually, what y'all actually do is y'all submit to us. Here's some things that we want to do. Okay, we will review it, come through to say it's qualified, it does not qualify. And if there's something that the body, council, and the mayor, everybody else got together on it, then what we're gonna do is actually address a letter that I'll plan. Your self emotion is gonna actually outline why are you doing this? What's the purpose that's gonna be done with the funds and what guidelines authorize you to do it as it relates to the American Rescue Plan? So that way, when, cause we've actually, uh, before, when we worked, when we started working on this last, yearful last with, uh, CARES, we worked with different audit for. Companies, find out what do they need as related to documentation? So that when they get ready to do auditing at the end, and do something larger, go on to state Alabama, you know, all different kind of levels. Uh, also, we met with the public examiner's office with state Alabama that's doing everything in public examiner for every state agency. Uh, we met with this real, uh, Rachel Riddler and her team, because we wanted to find out what things need to be in place. And so those things that we actually. Put in place and give a decision for everything you want to spend has come before the council. The reason for that is because, uh, with the amount of money that you have, you know, like I know y'all have already been had any federal audit before, but. It's gonna be even more detailed this time, and they've already talked about if there's anything that's dotted wrong, it could hinder you receiving federal funds in the future from other funding. And also receiving your second check that you actually gonna have. So, uh, the goal is gonna be, we'll present all that to your council president, to the mayor, then they would actually present it. Say, here's the guideline, so that when you have your minutes with your part, there's a payment rate. Now, if you do, as you may do, I think have y'all, I'm not sure if y'all DVDed anything like, like, uh, where y'all giving anything to the employees yet? But, um, I think, uh, I think back, now the mayor was telling me, and I think y'all did something to be someone for the employees. That may actually qualify under this as premium pay. Uh, we gotta look at how y'all actually do it, but we can actually qualify it on a premium pay now, but that requires a resolution. That has to be on file along with it, but for the other things, if you want to, you can do a resolution, or it can just be a motion.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if a revolution would help, you know, everybody to even more comfortable with it, we'll work hand in hand with your attorney. To make sure the resolution and the letter is ready for you to approve for every thing that you plan to do.
And, and, and that's what, um. It was told to. That what you just said, and that, that is why it's very important to this body, if we do, when we start spending this money, we, we just want to make sure to be keeping ourselves straight.
And I think what we need is exactly what you just said, Mr. Scott, is I think you need, uh, uh, what I would like for you to do is give us that in writing, so we can adopt that.
Yeah, we need that.
That process that you just talked, or we need that in writing, so we can, uh, we can adopt that as a council.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but that's the way we gonna have on record.
Yeah, and that, cause, cause we don't want, we want everybody, because this decision is probably depending on everybody, so that's why, like. You know, my first thing is anything that you're doing, documentation, paper trail. Cause when you go through the audit, because some expenditures you're gonna do, it may be up for review by treasurer. So if we have a paper trail, it all adds out to these costs, it, it closes the door to having profit.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have a question actually too, and also, I, our treasurer plays, uh, our finance office, what I've told you, that she plays a big role in this too.
Yes, sir.
With, uh, what we are requiring, uh, uh, they asked enough to be very, very cautious and be very, make sure that all the paperwork and the guideline is carried out according to. So that's why I was saying it's important that, uh, we all make sure that we. Keep resources for that.
Now, one thing that we, we have too is that, um, after each year, we have a black box, like what we call it, just like when they have like a black box, black file box. That has everything pertaining to your project. So everything that your finance department, you know, has in there, we're gonna have it, but our box is simply geared toward this to your office.
Okay.
Everything is labeled, everything is outlined, the policy, all these, it's that guideline we can hear. We're gonna have this on jump drive, so if they want to do cross reference to it to seek anything that relates to documentation of what you did, they can easily put it without. We don't want to have all this in there, and it's like three, four, five banners. Uh, we want to have where they can easily search through those certain sections of it, relate to whatever it is, and then they can easily write it off, say, okay, that's good, it's approved. Uh, and, uh, the other thing is gonna be too, is that we gonna keep a running tab, so we don't test the money. But whatever that your finance department has is what we're gonna have. So we're gonna be keeping a running tab of everything, if earned interest, if it's a bank charge, everything we have, yes, ma'am.
And also, they, they, they focus on us with this too. Uh, with this American Rescue Fund, is this fund put in with our general fund, or do they have a, a separate account that where you will be? Uh, like monitored, like you just said, uh, a running tab on how we use this and how we, we get reimbursed back.
Separate account.
Yeah.
We, we leave totally in a separate account. Uh, and the reason for that is that, um, now, I'm not sure about y'all accounting system, sometimes some accounting system, you can have, you know. Same account, different, you know, balances that's running within your system, but one thing we do encourage, if possible. That it needs to be in a separate account, so every transaction from this account to your general account, we can track it either from a transfer. But we do prefer a check, so that that way we have a paper trail to actually follow everything. I know it's a little extra sometimes, there was a transfer of one account to another, but we like, I like paper. I'm kind of old school with it, cause that way we can pull it out, show the check, so it's been signed, and signatures on the check also is a part of our checks and balance system. If you just do a transfer, you got transfer paper, but I love check. That means somebody signed off on it, that means documented, dated, when did it happen, and we got a paper trail on it. So, so I, I was gonna say too, if you actually, if you look, I know that we got a lot of information dealing with this, but if you actually look like, uh. Initiative examples of use of funds. And, um, I know there's some, uh, there that we share with, with your team who came to that meeting, but, uh, I've not, I emailed this to you, but it's the same message that we went over. Um, one is support public health response. Uh, and this talks about anything that helps to mitigate spread of COVID nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, behavior services, uh, things dealing with payroll reimbursement, that's why I was finding my first responders. Uh, and, and that would be your fire department and your police department. And it also attaches into, if y'all have dispatches, it also ties into dispatch.
Yeah, I saw that in there too.
Yeah, so.
This been.
So, uh, that cover that your negative, address negative economic impact, there's gonna be, so that says, um, things that can be able to support small businesses, uh. Um, y'all want to do some things to help to work with businesses locally, uh, kind of, uh, support local businesses campaign or somewhere, or your chamber of your agency. That can be something that you can be able to do, also having with tourism, uh, and hospitality industry. And I know this is a tourism town that has so much potential, so that is an area that really can be, uh, looked at heavily. And they, we've actually found a formula that you can get a five times return on investment for every dollar you're spending, if you spend it into tourism.
Which, which leads me, Mr. Scott, to the very first item on your spreadsheet. And I, I, I. I appreciate your conservative nature. What you just said was tourism, every building that we own, that city owns. It's probably historic or close to it.
Uh huh.
And because we live in the black belt in civil rights and all those kind of things. Everything that we own can be tied to tourism. That's the reason I think we need to take a very hard look at this very first one, which is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That we've got, that we need to get some of these buildings in a condition where. We can take people through Dallas, I mean, just own, all these buildings that we have are so rich in history. Drive our tourism and pull tourism to our city. And, um. I, I don't want us to do anything, certainly don't even consider doing anything that's gonna get us in trouble. But I think we need to take a very, very, very hard look at tying ends together. Um. I, I don't want to use the word creative, because I don't want to be creative. But I, I, I think if we really put some effort and some thought into this, we can justify some of what we're gonna do. That's just my opinion, that's just my opinion, so. And that was one of the things I, I was gonna ask about, was I know is to drive tourism. Um, and there's several of these, these things that, um. But we can get into that, the biggest thing we need is that policy and procedure that we can adopt. Okay, so we know, okay, this is what we got to do, um, in order to, to, uh. To get our processes.
I, I, I was gonna say, on the building part, that's it, that's the biggest thing that would help us relate to anything dealing with the building. That's why we had this section about additional.
Yeah.
Information, is like the project summer. Cause it's like, okay, let's say if you said we gonna do fifty thousand dollars of this deal, it's gonna be, what is it for?
Right.
And then, let's say if you say it's gonna be for, uh, bathroom, it's gonna be for, uh, technology, it's gonna be for demolition, it's gonna be for. Uh, making the bill better, we can even be clean, you know, then we can add all that in, and that, that, that stuff can be part of our justification.
Yes, I, I'm with you.
Wouldn't it? Am I right on home if I ask you this question?
Correct.
Wouldn't that follow up on the, on like capital improvement in our building and stuff? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that follow on the capital improvement?
Yeah.
Because it's have to deal with, uh, in and out of public. Uh, health and safety, because we are opening buildings up to the, the citizens with the COVID pandemic now. Wouldn't that kind of follow up under that?
Uh, yeah, but it did, it just, they were saying we gotta just connect it up.
Okay.
You know, it's like, so that says, if, if you're gonna come in and just, you just want to repay a deal. You know, but we can't justify this, connected to COVID, why, why are we paying the bill? How does this help us better prepare for COVID? How does this, does this help us, does this not help us? And then, that's why I say like, that can be one of the things that you don't like, we don't, we don't.
No, that's why I asked you, though.
We don't want this, so if you say pay, we got a tie to the overall recovery of what you do.
Okay.
So, yeah, but I mean, everything is possible, and all saying, the biggest thing is just have like a project summer of what needs to be done as relates to the building. Then we can go through and pick it out, and then if there's not enough information, we can say, well, um. Can you explain this and justify it? And then as long as that follows in the guideline, then we'll be good.
Okay.
Yeah. So, cause I, you know. Like, like the council was saying, I mean, I'm, I'm military, so I'm very, in our team, we very tight on everything, we don't get creative, we. We making sure that whatever that you're gonna be able to take when you're out to look at, it ain't no problem.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you.
Yes, sir.
Um, okay, do you have any other questions?
I did mostly, mostly what you, you give us here. I was going through it because it's a guideline that tells us, that's we're gonna ask you that question. He gave us this pamphlet right here, and then I just had the whole thing showing where, how. And that's why I asked you, wouldn't that follow up under there? So if we ought to do, everything's great.
That's right.
When, when can we, I'm just trying to think, uh, logistically now, um. I guess you pretty much have in writing what we already made as far as.
Yeah, yeah, what, what I'd be wanting to add is then that's a use, so you can actually, or you can adopt it.
Yeah, so when we do that, um, our next council meeting.
Yeah, we need to have it, uh, well, we need to. Yeah, we need to have it, uh, well, we need to bring it before our next work session.
Yeah.
And then we will, so we have it on there so we can vote on it, the policy procedure and how we will follow it.
Okay, um, and one other thing I wanna say too, is that y'all, y'all actually have two, two point one million this time. Uh, you got another check coming in June, the two point one. Now, once that money is gone, it's gone. So the thing I would ask the council to consider, um, and with the council, the mayor, everybody working together. If, if I give you, if I give you a fish, I need you for a day.
Okay.
You get fish, and you stay a home and mark. But if you can take what y'all have, and you develop a fish in home, but we can actually have fish, we can eat for a lifetime. So I wanna make sure too that y'all, they can consider about, uh, things you can do to use those funds to build a home. Cause, cause there, you know, a lot of, and I'm gonna tell you like this, some municipalities have decided that they use. All of their money and they put, they value, I mean, seven, eight hundred thousand, almost a million dollars. And then they did a water project, they put it in the ground. That money is, is gone. Now, I know they needed to do the project, but the thing we're trying to explain too is that. The infrastructure bill just pays, is one point two trillion dollars. That, that bill was almost designed to help the city of Salem.
Yeah.
But the thing that you gotta do to be ready is to have shovel ready projects. So all of your, any project that y'all want to do, uh, I'm gonna say it to you this way. I can't, I told you I can't be so, so direct, because, uh, you know, I'm one of those people that I, I, I work hard. I, I, I try to have those relationships to, to know how, what's coming out of my mind. I would say, I would advise, that it'd be really good to make sure you have a ton of shovel ready projects ready.
Oh, we got plenty of projects.
Everything you want to do, parks, roads, bridges, drainage, uh, you know, renovation of buildings. Uh, tourism, you just need to have the money to go come, you know. And the, the infrastructure is one point two trillion, the state is right now, they're in the legislature, where they're gonna be deciding on how they're gonna spend. The money that's left that they have. I know they have five hundred and eighty million, and they talk about that is about another, I think. One billion or something may be on the table for them to figure out exactly how they're gonna spend. They're talking about possibly money being, someone being available to assist with infrastructure projects. But you gotta have shovel ready project.
And I think that, uh, you go, you, and we, uh, no one has a problem being indirect on the right way to, to, to use and spend this money. Um, and I think that it's good that you're telling us, but meanwhile, the whole body needs to hear this from you. And, 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 and as a citizen of, of the city of Salem, I think they appreciate that we do have someone. To give us a guideline on to make sure that we get these things that we've been needing in this city. Cause all of us got some need in our ward, and you gotta worry about the shovel, we got plenty of projects, and we've been asking for a while.
And I think what I wanna do is ask Mr. Scott, if he could come back to work.
Yes, next Thursday.
I think it was important to have this meeting to, to, to under, I wanted him to understand exactly what we need, which I think he knew. And what we needed to get in writing so we could adopt it.
Okay.
Um, so I don't wanna, like I said, I'm, I'm not gonna drag this meeting, um, we needed to establish a start. And, um, if we can get that in writing, and then maybe if you don't mind coming back to the work session, uh, a week from tomorrow.
Okay, um, I was gonna say, what, what thing would be beneficial to have in place? So when we have that work session, then that meeting is most productive.
Yeah.
Uh, what, what things do you think they would ever help to be most productive?
I think really it's maybe reviewing what you're gonna give us in writing.
Yeah.
So we can have a chance, the council members can have a chance to kind of thaw through it, formulate any questions. So we could be ready for, you know, if there's anything that we need to change in there, probably won't be, but at least we'll have a chance to lay our eyes on it. So we can vote on it on the following Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, and, and I know with your Lauderdale project, we had it rolling. We had looked at that already, that information, uh, they, they sent the information over to us. So that project qualifies on the American Rescue.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so it does qualify on the Rescue Plan. Only thing that, uh, I think y'all already had a motion or something.
Yeah, we had voted.
So, uh, only thing we're gonna do is just go back and actually add a letter along with it, you know, stating based on this, and it qualifies. So it added to the minutes with the city park. Um, and then I was gonna say too, uh, I, I want y'all to look at it, this is just a piece of the pie.
Right.
Um, the more that, that Salem as a whole can be, you know, like use our relationships. You might be able to get another, you might be able to get another ten million dollars.
Right.
I, I, I'm just being, I'm being honest with you that there is just an abundance of funds available for projects. And, and the thing is that, if you, you, okay, they, they, if you don't take advantage of it, other areas are already getting ready, so. So just, with y'all, with the tourism, if the name Salem, uh, the other thing is too, is that, uh, with y'all project, I know I had talked with Woo. Uh, I'm gonna give a chance to follow back up with her and see, um, the, the breakdown in one of y'all other projects that you have that's coming. And then anything else you wanna do, so we can see, uh, what y'all wanna do, so we can also be looking at other resources and that thing. So, uh, so that's gonna be something we're gonna be looking at also.
And I think we, and I think we did, then we, uh, we saw, we did, then we do, uh, uh. I think we did turn in something, and then some of us already had some priority, projects have been on the, on the ballot. For a minute, uh, some major things, so we do, uh, most of our heads are. We, we, we practically know what some of the things that we need.
And I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, and we need to bring those things back up, Ms. Jenny, like, you know, you have a residence in your ward that has silver backing up.
Right now, we have, we have issues right now.
Bring all those things back to the, and get it, get it in.
So, so have, has that project been worked up for you?
Uh, I, I, I've, I've been working on it, I talked to the mayor the last time we had the meeting. And the situation has not cleared, it has not been taken care of yet. And, um, this is, this is a major, this is something serious that we need to take care of. If we got the, you know, the new pipes need to be dug or whatever, this is the time that we need to take care of issues for.
Do y'all have an engineer?
Yes, we, I met with him too.
Hawkins done.
Okay, so then y'all. Did, for all y'all stuff.
Yeah, he does, he has everything.
Uh, I think that's gonna, that's gonna be the work.
Yeah.
That, cause you'll be ahead of the curve.
Yeah.
Uh, and then I was gonna say too, um, you have aggressive money that's failed. Uh, you know, the Congress wants to support our, our project, so if we have some shovel ready project, that's another follow up.
Yeah.
And then I'll ask you something, was you, why is you saying this? You know, we have advocate, we meet with our House of Representatives next year. And you know, some of that, of things that you have directed us to, we will be able to, uh, see can we get some of that happening for us?
Yeah, uh, we need to recall our representative, uh, Representative Chesnut.
Yeah, we meet with him next week.
And talk about, yeah, send him some, some, what he, about there, he's stationed there. And they need our support to make sure that they pushing it again.
African Day, African Day is next week, and, uh, that's where everybody come from, every state part of Alabama. And we get a chance to go to the House of Representatives and talk to our representative.
Okay.
Point some things out.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Uh, I, I most certainly do, and, and, and I will be brief. First, I wanna thank you, Councilman Harvey, the chairman of the committee, when we spoke. And I asked you to expedite this meeting, you graciously did, so, so I appreciate that. Uh, and the key part to expediting this meeting was to get this piece of information. That we need so that the staff could then proceed, we're trying to parallel, we wanna parallel this work. To cut down on the actual time it's gonna take to get it done. And so as, uh, as, uh, as Scott, as you draft that resolution. Uh, when you get that draft ready, if you can go ahead and get it to us before Thursday. So that we can, what the information that we are preparing for the council for that same work session. We can be using that draft resolution for the preparation of that. The other thing is, we do have the, uh, the ARP money in a separate bank account. And it is in a restricted fund account in the accounting system, so the answer to both of those questions is yes. Um, and then, uh, you know, the other thing is, I, I wanted to ask that, you know, because that infrastructure money. We, we, we do believe it's gonna come down, we don't know what formula the state's gonna be using. Uh, to, to do the appropriations and the distribution of that money. But, um, I, I think this Lauderdale project may fit with that. Uh, and there may be, there may be, um, less restrictions, if you will. For doing those kinds of projects with the infrastructure money, and then we may be able to look at this other piece. But timing is important, because we also wanna get that downtown's whole situation resurfaced. So I, there, there are a lot of, there are a lot of ifs, there are a lot of moving parts to this, but I wanna thank you again, uh, Mr. Scott. Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Janet Thomas, for taking the time to come to the meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And, and I was gonna say, and, and pardon me for being rude earlier, that I actually have one of my things, also along with us. That's, uh, Ms. Bruce that's here with us today, and, uh, she wanted it, she has a extensive background, uh, in technology. Dealing with, uh, Dyna Ice Crossities, project management, so we've been led to have a strong team that's doing the groundwork behind the things. So that when you ask us, um, we work in day and night to make sure that we get it done, but yeah, whatever you ask, but we don't, don't have it, we know where to go get it. But just pardon me, but don't, I wanted to make sure that I acknowledged Ms. Bruce earlier.
Hey, Ms. Bruce. If you will, if you will, uh, the, the, the documentation that we've been talking about. If you would send that to Ms. Nikki and Dawn, or. That would probably be good, that way we'll make sure everybody, the mayor's, we'll make sure the mayor's office is, is covered. And, um, you know, Ms. Smith is, is covered, and we'll make sure the council is covered, so.
Yes, sir.
That, that's gonna be the best way to let that information.
Yes, sir, that'd be more, be more than nice to get.
All right, very good, any, anything else, we're good? All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, but I was gonna say, uh, I, I took the mayor by getting the overall, but, um, and then that would help if we can go through. Everything, because the thing we actually did on our spreadsheet, like this right here was actually what they gave us with, we got a set. But our information is blank, and the only thing that's on there right now is just the, um. You know, ten of their Lauderdale project is something that qualifies, but it can follow up on the infrastructure, like you said. I, I wasn't sure with y'all timeline, that y'all trying to get it done.
We're gonna have to pay for it before, probably before any of those other funds come through, so.
Okay.
I mean, it's probably gonna be one, I think we're gonna struggle a little bit. It's not gonna be perfect, it's not gonna be a clean sweep, we're gonna. We're gonna have some overlap and probably miss a lot of entities, but that's just part of it.